You good? You good to go?
I have to answer my questions.
You have a seat?
I just called you about a certain thing when I'm calling.
Okay, all right, going through the agenda. First item for approval of minutes. We have October 21st meetings, November minutes, November 4th meeting minutes, and November 18th meeting minutes for approval. Okay. Moving into local laws held. Number two, which is local law E, as amended, it's going to be a pass. Waste collection fee. Okay, under ordinances introduced, number 45 is Mr. Conti's. You want to say anything about that?
This one... Yeah, we discussed last week. This just provides that the address is a quite a small emergency and parking is made available in a city park. If there's a special event happening that... First, we have to leave parking after the special event. And it's ordered to wait to...
Okay, okay, and that'll be referral to law?
Yeah, yeah, it's going to law.
It's going to law. Okay, ordinance number 46 by the Law Committee. Do you have a copy of that? Of ordinance number 46? It's a referral to law, okay?
Forty-six, too?
Forty-six is a referral to law, yes.
Forty-seven.
Okay, forty-seven, Mr. Conti.
Okay, so this report also is discussed last week. This is a technical amendment correction. So earlier in the year, we made change and we provided for a grace period in the second 24 hours of this small emergency. So you can transition from one side to the other. The language in here is incorrect. I think it says transition from odd to even. We want to say even to odd or vice versa. So it's just a technical correction. And I ask if we could just, you know, if we unanimous consent to pass it tonight?
All right, so members, in order to pass it when it's introduced, got to do unanimous consent, and that's what Mr. Conti's requesting. We all okay with that?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Okay, number 48 is an MC.
Financing.
Is it up?
I just put it by.
All right, it'll be by finance. Ms. O'Shea's not here right now. And it's going to be referred, it's by finance, it's going to be referred to finance. And it's reducing bonding.
Oh, it is here?
It is. Will you just kind of pass that down?
Yep.
At this point, there's a copy of it, but I'm going to move on. It's being referred to finance.
I guess to savings and unstrat.
Correct. It's reducing the bond.
Do people want those waste collection fee?
Okay, ordinance is held. We skip all to number 24. All of them up till number 24 are holds. Still, number 24 is honorary street naming. We had a conversation about it in caucus, and I had mentioned that I was willing to hold it. We've, because Mr. Ballerin had an issue with...
Living or Dead.
Living or Dead, right. The issue was that he didn't think we should do, we should be able to do living folks, which, okay. And my compromise was to add the line, we will do living folks by unanimous, by unanimous consent of the council. Does that work for you? Okay, okay, by unanimous consent.
I don't think anyone's, I don't think we've had an issue with one honor something.
Right, and that should take care of that. So it's going to be a pass.
Oh, it is going to be a pass.
It's going to be a pass.
But not tonight?
It is going to be a pass tonight. Do you have a...
I just...
It just went around. This is it right here. The only issue was the living or dead, and we've added the exception. So that squares away that issue. So it'll be a pass, okay? The rest are, the rest of the ordinances held are held. Let's get into resolutions, resolutions introduced. Okay, under resolutions introduced, number 84 is Mr. Johnson, Mr. Johnson's. It's declaring December 20th National Survivors of Homicide Victims Awareness Month. All members want to be cosponsors on that? Yes, 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 yes. All right. All right, number 85 is by finance. It's the tax charges from the treasurer's office. It's going to be a pass. Eighty-five was from finance, discussed in finance, and it's going to be a pass. Eighty-six, same. It's a levy on pee, water, and sewer charges. Was finance. It's going to be a pass. Number 87, Mr. Anani, this is the one you...
Yeah.
Okay, by council member Anani, it's the levy. It was discussed. It's also going to be a pass. Eighty-eight, from law. It's going to be to appoint a new corp council. It's going to be referred to law. It's an intro, and it's referred to law.
Yeah, in the meetings tomorrow.
Okay, meeting's on 17. 17. Okay. So, okay, now we got a couple of MCs. So number 89. It's the CDBG support resolution. We usually do this in June, but it got away from me, and I were doing this to correct it. Allows the city to submit requests to HUD for release of funds for CDBG home, and all the programs run out of community development. That'll be a pass. Okay, number 90. Is it...
That's Judy.
That's an MC. Judy, you want it to be finance or yours?
I thought that was planning.
Ninety is for the restrictive covenant?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think it actually is planning.
Okay, planning, and it will go to planning, referred to planning. Okay. Next MC, 91, it's going to be the resolution appointing Gabriela Mora Sabada as a member of Sustainability Advisory Committee. It went before planning. They chose her. She's actually here. Do you want to say a few words to council members?
Come on, join us. I'm a friendly soul, remember me?
I do.
Come on, come on. Let's get introduced yourself.
Hi. Nice to meet you all officially. Thank you for the opportunity. Before digging in and doing this.
Okay, any members' questions now?
No.
Thank you.
I just want to comment. You have some excellent background for this. And you came to Albany about 10 years ago, was it, nine? And I think that I recall your talking about how you got here. And I was like, oh, well, this is a pretty decent place, and it's only getting better all the time. And I appreciated that comment. You work for...
I work for New York State Parks and Grass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My last name is not Mora Sabada.
Okay, then it's got to be switched.
Thank you.
That's a pass?
It's a pass. Okay, and lastly, number 92 is an MC by Ms. Love. You want to speak about that? That's the Major Lee Douglas Resolution.
Yeah, just briefly. All council members aware, this is Jamel's nephew. That's likely showing last week over in Florida, finding hands of the babysitter.
Okay, yeah, so that'll be a pass.
Do all members want to...
All members want to be cosponsors?
Yes.
Okay, onto resolutions held.
That was the last one.
One, two, three, four.
Do you have mine?
Yeah, ordinance 48, we already reviewed that. That was another MC, yeah.
Okay, under resolutions held, one, two, and three are skipped. Down to four, finance. From finance, it's the homestead, non-homestead rate. Mike Wheeler came and spoke to the Finance Committee about it. It'll be a pass. Okay, number five by Ms. O'Shea, asking for the vacancy study. That's going to be a pass. And that went before the Housing Committee on the 20th of November, and it passed out with a positive recommendation. Number six is from General Services. Mr. Coffey came and spoke to that. It was a water, related to the Water Board. That's going to be a pass. Okay, number seven is supporting safe staffing levels at Obby Med. That's Mr. Anani. You want to say anything real quick about it?
Yeah.
Real quick.
I just want to thank my colleagues over this weekend that showed up and rallied to show their support for the nurses. Again, this is going to be a long battle, part of the battles we're having. Looking at all the work that our nurses do on a daily basis. So I want to thank all my colleagues who co-sponsored this legislation.
And we're all?
Yeah, all.
Okay, good, all right. Okay, number eight from General Services. Again, Mr. Coffey came in and spoke to the caucus regarding it. So it's going to be a pass. Number nine, that's going to be a withdrawal by Ms. O'Shea. It was from finance, it was resolution number 79. It's going to be withdrawn. And lastly, number 10, finance. It was for salary adjustments for positions in the budget. Went to finance, passed out, positive recommendation. Judy, do you care to say anything about that? But it's going to be a pass.
There are really relatively few changes in salary. Most of them are minor corrections because of one different raise. Recognizing the budget, increasing the budget in a bigger title plan. The two most significant ones are for the mapping technologist for water. They're asking to post that position at a higher rate than they have been paying person. The position's currently vacant, and they want to be able to attract a higher quality candidate. They did fully justify it by providing compadres to the state and a few other municipalities. And then, Human Resources is doing a reorganization, moving away from separate lines to discharge generalist position, discharge generalist 1, 2, and 3. That is, that is a budget neutral reorganization. And that the Finance Committee reacted very positive, and other members present reacted very positively to the presentation by Syria Gonzalez regarding that. So I don't think there are any significant issues with these. Oh, there's about 10 salary changes and title changes. So, and just so you understand, the goal is, these were things that ideally would have been taken care of in the 2020 budget. So the budget will be published with these changes incorporated into it, with a notation in the beginning indicating that it's the budget as adopted, with the changes adopted by resolution. And again, you cannot make these salary adjustments under our city charter through amendments to the budget. So that's, so we do it through a resolution in this way.
Okay, Mr. Holy.
Yeah, I got a question because we went really fast with the garbage fee. A person in my ward came up to me and said that, you know, they understand the garbage fee, that they have a family house, but they haven't rented the apartment like in 10 years. And they're, you know, now going to get hit paying double, even though nobody lives there. So you can fill out something.
That's a good exception.
If they don't have RLP on that, what's the...
That would allow them to rent it. It's...
Thank you. But I'm correct that they don't have the RLP, that's going to be... I think where you have a lot of cases where you work off an exemption, you set it as a true family, and so unless otherwise, it's assumed that it's a true family. And it goes that way. But the fact is, it's not being used in the RLP.
Yeah, FYI, you mail out an exemption application with the first round of bills. So we went through all that already.
They have a couple of kitchens. They call down the codes. And codes, you're like, well, you have two kitchens. You can't get a change to one family.
And some people don't want to get a change to one family. Put it to one family for their own reasons, too. But as long as they don't have RLP, and they're not renting out, and codes checks it out, that they're not charged for it.
So that's a big thing. Thank you. Something I was...
Okay. All right, so we've kind of built in time to have a little further discussion on stuff that, as leadership, we talked about. And also, we wanted to allow, because of what's going on in Mr. Robinson and Mrs. Love's area with the shutting down the store, we wanted to give them, you know, time to kind of explain to us what's actually going on with that. Mr. Robinson isn't here just yet, but would you like to speak to it?
Yes. The last 60 days, Councilman Robinson had two murders on the same corner of Justin and Second. The second one that happened just a week and a half ago, a week ago, they just buried the boy last Friday. The day after the murder, I read an email, a text from the mayor and the chief that they wanted to go walk to the neighborhood. So we got him that Sunday, and with the chief, a couple of the lieutenants, Dr. Bernard Robinson and Houseman Robinson could not make it due to the crisis of react going on with his family. So we walked through, and we knocked on doors, and we started yelling. And some people used some choice words that I will not repeat right now. But the thing was, they want this door shut down. We knocked on hammers, and we knocked on windows. They were scared to come out. There were kids in that lane who smelled. When we did, when we was coming up at that age, they can't come out, pushing some of them. This is definitely a safety issue and a quality of life. It is terrible over in this region. Like I said, at least 30 doors we knocked on. And no one had anything nice to say about it. Now, I realize maybe some people are going to come down tonight to protest Robinson is not able to make it, and I will speak on his behalf. But I was there. I was in the neighborhood. I did the walk. For about two hours in the cold, in the snow, just at that snowstorm, you know? And people are saying that the store didn't do anything. But that's not the issue. The store is a magnet for trouble. It's a magnet. The boy came out of the store and got shot. This is what the neighbors are telling us. We're not there. But this store is a magnet for trouble. And the first thing you say to his constituents is, they say, shut it down. They want this store shut down. They have no quality of life over there, and it's a big safety issue. When people are shooting someone at 11 o'clock in the morning, and the camera picked you up, and you've got a dozen people standing outside, that's a problem. That's a big problem for him. And I stand by him, and he's going to ask the council to stand by him also. This is not a problem just for Jamel. It's a problem for the city. There's 15 representatives. It's not 15 cities. There's 15 representatives, and we represent one city. We all have to rally around him and make sure that our kids are safe. We got seniors over there that can't come out. We got people that's stuck over there because they can't get out. They own the house, they got paid for. That's what they do. And they live in fear every day. And there's something need to be done.
Does that have to go to the zoning board?
Yes.
So they're the ones that make the decision?
Yes.
But have they documented any code violations?
Listen, we have, we met with the mayor last week. We have a lot of missing things. Not only stuff that's going on outside the store, they got this stuff that's going on inside the store. So this is not just on the outside.
What kinds of things on...
Well, I'm not, no, we can get into that later, you know? I'm not going to sit here and say, but we, it's going to the BCA. Robinson and the chief, not the chief, Chris Spencer, signed off on everything last week when we had the press conference. It's going to the BCA, and he's asking the council to support him on this.
Okay, all right. So just starting to read some of the things in the paper. I spoke to you of the piece tonight. Close this, or we're going to go to another corner nearby, and then...
There's a plan in place. There's a plan in place. The chief and the mayor has been related to plan. They will move forward with the plan. I'm not privy to say what is next.
Oh, I just read...
No, I'm just, yeah, yeah.
When you need something.
And I understand what the people are saying. We close this one down, they move someplace else. We got to start somewhere. We have to start somewhere. And this is a start.
At my support. So Jenny, you want to go through the rest of the items?
Yeah, so just to, some of the quick updates. A reminder that if people are available, that we'll be meeting after the meeting tonight for a holiday cocktail. If you can't, that's okay. But I also just wanted to note the Councilman Robinson's nephew, the viewing and the services tomorrow at Metropolitan Baptist Church on 105 Second Street. And the viewing's from 9 to 11, and then there'll be a service at 11. Also tomorrow, in the beautiful 10th and 13th Forbes. The Madison Theater is having their block party. That's 4 to 7.
4 to 8.
4 to 8. On Wednesday, during the day, there is a rotunda event to de-stress at City Hall. For City Hall employees, if you would like to de-stress at City Hall, please join.
What time?
I don't know what time. I didn't know that. I think it might be all day, but we can check and see. I have, I don't know the details. You should... I, I think that you should bring smudge, you should smudge. So bring all of your incense.
I got it.
So, and also a reminder, the City Hall Holiday Lunch is 12 to 2 on Friday. On, just to keep it in people's minds, because our next caucus date would be on New Year's Day, we're having it on Thursday instead. So that's January 2nd, Thursday is caucus. And to just plant the seeds for everyone, once again, that the Black History Month is coming in, our thing is coming in February, so...
And it's not a council thing?
It is a council thing. No, it is a council thing. We also finalized the upcoming committee appointments. There has been some shifting around, but not much. We, for the most part, wanted to keep things the same for this second part, because we have some members, or a member, that will be moving on to another exciting role. We did have a few things to shift around. But on a whole, we tried to keep things pretty much the same. So people can keep serving on their committees. I think that's everything. And also, if anybody's interested, we have, I'm not sure why we have two of these.
Yeah, what's the difference?
So, I did, the new plans, one allows the legislature to appropriate the council two weeks before it's introduced, and one is one week before the caucus. Because I wasn't sure, because initially, when I started researching this, I was referring to the procedures of operations in Section 4.1, which I put up in the back of one of the drafts, said that it should be incorporated to council two weeks before its intended introduction. But then 4.11 said that it should be incorporated to council by noon. So I did it to their ways. So I could refer to council leadership and the common committee to determine what's most appropriate.
That seems like something we should probably fix. Do you have any...
Mr. Holy?
I was removed from, we're in a little bit upset, and then we go up to your minutes that I was on. Yeah, this is... Just to kind of figure out what other members are interested in.
We did, what basically happened is we got those, we had, from when our session first started, we had requests from members. We just worked off of that. So they were, in fact, your requests.
I'm saying this. Over the past couple of months, people have learned different committees and what, which committee is doing what. I'm pretty sure individuals could have made other recommendations. The ones that we made two, what, two years ago? We were new, so we wanted, okay, now we figure out which committees is working, which committee is doing this. We have learned a lot about all the committees. So it would have been nice if you would have just sent out an email saying, is anyone that's interested in this committee or interested in that committee before? That's just my...
The thing is, everyone can get what they want, for one. Two, it's literally like a LSAT logic game trying to plug folks in. You move one person, then it moves another. So it's not as easy as you think. It's not, it's complicated.
I just want to say this, I'm speaking on this issue. All my committees, and I love all my committees. I'm not like, you know, speaking because I'm disappointed with the committees that I'm on, because I love all my committees that I'm on. I'm just saying, just for future moving forward, I think that it would be nice if you could send a recommendation to other members and say, are you interested in certain committees? This is what, just to kind of evaluate if there are individuals who are interested in being in other committees, other than what they are on right now. I mean, my committees have a change, and I appreciate that. But I think moving forward, if you can reach out to other council members.
Point taken.
My number one choice two years ago, and now a total of 12. And you pulled me off also across the rap. I mean, I'm like, because I...
But planning was, but, but, see, Tom, now you've got, that's that, that has...
Oh, no, no. Actually, Tom, your number one choice two years ago was planning.
Yeah, it was. I worked off on your, the old list.
Yeah, I mean, so it was something where, and it's because of your passion for, for the different things that come into planning. Yeah, I mean, so it was something where, and it's because of your passion for, um, for the different things that come into planning.
You didn't want to be-
It was, I mean-
All you talk about is planning.
Yeah.
I thought it was, yeah.
It was, it was something where-
Well, again, this is like, I would be, he said, this is your new thing. You, like, like, uh, who said, maybe if you would've sent that email, we're gonna redo the committees. 'Cause I had talked to, um, to Richard, he said, we don't change committees.
There was minimal change. It changed the last time we were out at the-
Yeah, and it was something where I, because we lost a member, which needed to kind of shift things around.
That shifted, yeah.
That was what, so there wasn't a plan for, um, massive change at all.
But I got, I guess, we committed, right?
And I-
We're gonna change, but that's alright. I mean, I'll live with it, but it just, I'm hurt and I wasn't expecting it to-
And I mean, Tom, if there's some, I mean, I, you, actually, I swapped operations for planning for you. Um, and I would rather stay on planning, but I thought that it would be, I thought you really wanted planning. So I was like, I'm gonna give Tom planning, so if you wanna swap that back, I think.
Right, and there, and the thing is, again, once we lost a member, there was changes and then there was more changes at the last minute. You know what? The changes aren't gonna be made till the end, till the beginning of the year. So let's table, let's table this right now and we'll, and we'll work on it. But I'm, I'm actually leaning towards not changing anything. It, it was hard to get to where we were.
Yes, we do.
So, and Tom, I, it's, you, you know me well enough, you just accused me of changing you because you ran against me. I, I've had, I still talk to you, we have conversations. I can't believe you said that. Wait, wait.
I can't believe y'all want me like this.
I can't either.
Well-
Where are you going?
I mean, it looks, it's gonna have to be kinda the way it is.
Okay, so any, anything else?
Um, we just passed, uh-
Invite the chief of police to our next caucus to, uh, give us a breakdown of the reorganization. I know we've all heard a lot about it, uh- City council, uh-
Public safety.
Labor Association meetings is over, but I think we'll get a breakdown from here.
Okay, good.
So we, we-
The fourteenth, we'll just wait for the location.
We have to ask questions, uh, more often.
If I can just respond, um, Alfredo, the Public Safety Committee met with AcPAC and, um, what we discussed is that we will have a joint meeting with AcPAC in the community so that the chief is not having to deliver the presentation multiple times. Um, he can deliver that presentation to the community at large, AcPAC members and council members. The meeting, we were in the process of trying to get a date secured, tentatively, that date is scheduled for the fourteenth.
Yes, it is.
We're just trying to nail down a time and I believe the location is at the library.
We're, we're trying to-
Just trying to nail down the, um-
Location. The time is five thirty.
Oh, the time is five thirty. Working to nail down a location.
The fourteenth.
What was that, Josh?
January.
Well, she said, Michelle said that we're trying to nail down a location. I know you mentioned Albany High.
We couldn't get that. Yeah. And we needed it to be accessible too, for some reason.
So we'll make sure everybody gets the details for that meeting, but if you can mark your calendar for the fourteenth. Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, if no one has anything else?
Did we talk about that? Did Danielle talk about this? The dates? I mean, she has two versions that-
We kinda, we can hand you that.
Okay.